Okay, tonight we do have a couple of slight modifications to our agenda that I'm going to recommend. We want to take tonight and move up our public comment right after our public hearing. So we would have the public hearing, public comment, then new business. And then on the second page, we need to add a purchase order that came to us just in the nick of time to get some security equipment that we need for our renovation of our courthouse. So we need to add a purchase order right before the discussion of consolidation of animal control and animal shelter. So a purchase order to point security for an x-ray and metal detector for the entrance of the NX2 courthouse building for the sheriff's security plan. So we have a motion to amend the agenda with moving the public comments and adding a purchase order for point security.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion or any additional changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, at this time you do have the minutes from our special call meeting that we had on February the 23rd. This was a public hearing that we had. Is there any questions or issues with those minutes from February the 23rd?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these will be approved as presented. Okay, we did have a work session on February the 28th where we had a discussion up at the Civic Center with members of the defined pension fund. So we have the minutes from that meeting. Is there any concerns or questions about those minutes?
Just a question, has Christie and them been working with all the questions we got at that meeting and they?
We, I personally have not been involved. I'm not sure if Christie's had any interaction. So I'm going to follow up with her on that next week so we can hopefully bring closure to that this month.
Yes, I think that'd be good.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart. We have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved.
Excuse me, Commissioner, you may want to go back to the top without having the clerk establish a form.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss the, thank you. Okay, we need the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Blake Moore?
President.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
President.
All right, sorry about that. Okay, we do have another public hearing tonight on ordinance 02-22 to amend certain sections of Chapter 20 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia, to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and its provisions. The main change of the provision of this was that section on the second page, section 109.3 of the International Property Maintenance Code 2021 edition is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. 109.3, determination of citations. A magistrate court judge shall conduct a trial and determine whether the violation set forth in the citation occurred. The judge shall enter an order, and if the violation occurred, set forth the dollar amount of the fine and any other appropriate legal action. This ordinance shall become effective upon adoption. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the courts, jurisdiction then said holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak or have any questions about Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is time for our public comments. So we've moved this up from the back of the agenda to the front of the agenda in case there was anybody that wanted to speak in regards to the items on the agenda, in particular the comprehensive plan. So you want, yes, sir, come on up, please.
The comprehensive plan needed a few corrections, and one was on page 32 of 255 where it said more, and then it was changed to less. That was done on the copy of the Walker County, on the Walker County webpage. My question is, the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, when it was issued out on February the 4th, the Walker County Comprehensive Plan, that correction has not been made. So I was wondering, will you be voting on the one that was posted on the Walker County webpage, or will you be voting on the one that's posted on the North Georgia Regional Commission?
My recommendation tonight is going to be to table this document again. We've had a couple of staff members that are very good English majors that have been going through it. We have found some clerical issues with spell check, punctuation, some things of that nature. It being such a large document, them going through that and making all those changes, plus we wanted to give anyone else time to speak on this. So my recommendation to the board would be to table it, get all of the clerical adjustments made, and then get that information back out before the next meeting.
Like I said, it was posted on the 4th of February, and it was just posted on the Walker County webpage last week. That's not very much time to be reviewed by the public or the commissioners. On page 236 of 255, I understand that was corrected where it said, under Walker Industrial Park Phase 2 Access Road, it said $500 million. I understand that was, has been corrected, but there again, it hadn't been corrected on the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission webpage. And on page 241 of 255, it has Macklemore Water Project, $4,500,000 is the estimate cost for that, and it says grants, splash, and Walker County Government user fees. What is Walker County Government user fees is? Who is that or what is that?
I don't know, I'll have to look into that. I'm not sure what that's referencing in that.
Okay, yes, it's on page 241 of 255, Macklemore Water Project, $4,500,000. One other thing I was looking at here, I know we just got a grant for the $6.2 million for broadband. I don't think this was correct on page 42 of 255. Basically, what it says is, the Walker County Government and the local municipalities in Walker County have no interest in becoming broadband ready at this time. Would that be a correct statement?
No, there should be a section in there of new action plans, and I don't know if that's the section you're in or not. That would not be correct.
I'm just under it, the heading was broadband, it's on page 42 of 255.
Because they have made revisions in the guidelines from the state through the Department of Community Affairs for communities that want to be broadband ready, to have that added to the comprehensive plan. So the broadband portion does need to be in our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything on any topic? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward then if anyone has anything else. So at this time, we do have a proclamation that we would like to read. It says, proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, multiple myeloma awareness month, whereas multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer in the world, is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow and can occur in multiple areas inside the body. Whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 140,000 people in the United States, an estimated 34,470 new cases will be diagnosed, and 12,640 deaths will occur from this disease in 2022, according to the American Cancer Society. And whereas every 15 minutes, someone in the U.S. is diagnosed with multiple myeloma, although the cause remains unknown. And whereas multiple myeloma causes a variety of adverse health effects, including a weakness immune system, amniac kidney damage, and bone deterioration. And whereas multiple myeloma is nearly twice as likely to occur among African Americans, is one of the leading causes of cancer deaths among African Americans. With scientific understanding of the disparity remaining is unknown. And whereas greater awareness of the disease among clinics, or clinicians, excuse me, and the general public will lead to earlier detection and treatment, improving health outcomes, and bring comfort to patients and their families. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate March as the Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in Walker County to increase public knowledge of the disease, advance the vision of finding the cure for multiple myeloma, sign and seal the 10th day of March 2022. And it's with great honor today to present this to our sheriff. It's been a pleasure. We have been able to do this for the last five consecutive years that I've been in office to bring attention to this. And so there is a couple of copies there, and we would like for you to speak and share it with us, and then we'll do a photo as soon as you speak.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate the commission in doing this, multiple myeloma. I'm a 12-year survivor, which is remarkable. When I first was diagnosed in 2009, the outlook wasn't too great past five years. So I'm still kicking and still working and still putting bad guys in jail, so, or at least my employees are. I try not to get involved in all that. No, I'm thankful that I had a good response to my treatment, and there's not, a lot of people do not have as great of a response. We have several people here in Walker County that are survivors of multiple myeloma. One of my friends in Flintstone, right now, is going through his second transplant at Vanderbilt. I talked to him earlier this week, and I thought it was going to be next week, and I asked him to be here with me tonight, and he said, I'm in Vanderbilt right now, I don't believe I'll be able to make it. So it's a disease, blood cancer, that about 21,000 people a year are diagnosed with. So it's not one of the big name cancers. So that's why we do this. We are doing proclamations all over the Chattanooga area, and I assume all over the United States. I want to say thank you to Linda Hugleley, our coordinator at the Multiple Myeloma Support Group in Chattanooga. She's been with me here in the past, but she is actually coordinating a survivor group meeting tonight and could not be here. But she told me, be sure I got pictures and send them to her, and she would put them on the survivor webpage. So thank you again, gentlemen, and all the people behind that made this possible.
Hold up here. Make sure we get Ms. Linda a picture. She did come in, and with her several times, so she's very sweet. She's also a survivor.
Yeah, she is.
If you all want to, just get right in here. Sheriff, could you hold the?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the ordnance that we spoke about, had the hearing on earlier, is the O02-22 to amend certain sections of Chapter 20 of the Code of the Walker County, Georgia, to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Maintenance Code and the other provisions. So any further discussion of the board on this at this time? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this ordinance change?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. Okay, the next item we had was the resolution to adopt the joint comprehensive plans. We appreciate you coming forward tonight, bringing some other typos to our attention. Joe has been feverishly working on this now that he's got an editable document. So it's my recommendation that we move to table this into our next meeting and make sure we've got a good, clean, without any errors, copy. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this into our next scheduled meeting on the 24th of March.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board?
One question. We've put it on the agenda for the next two weeks now. If we've not had time to review that, then we'll table it until we do. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, but it may take a little time to get that out, and then we want the public to have time to review it as well.
Absolutely.
No problem.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll table that to our next meeting. Okay, we have a resolution R1422 to adopt fees at the landfill, a resolution R1422, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt the fee schedule set forth at the Walker County Landfill Material List and Price Guide, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Board desires to establish the fees at the Walker County landfill for disposal of various materials, whereas the Board has the authority to set fees pursuant to the Walker County Code of Ordinance, and whereas the Board periodically implements rate changes at the landfill in order to maintain solid waste services, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the fees associated with the Walker County Landfill Material List and Price Guide shall be set forth in Exhibit A attached and made part hereof, so resolved and adopted the 10th day of March 2022. Payne Gilli, our director, who's here with us tonight, and I'd like, if he would, I'm probably putting him on the spot, if he would come up and talk about what's driving these increases and our vendor increase and overhead increases, and if there's any questions for Payne Gilli.
Every year, our waste handler reviews, contract reviews, a consumer price index, and determines a rate increase based on fuel and, you know, the cost of disposal of waste. And they recently issued their rate increase for this year, which is about 99 cents. So the purpose of this rate increase is to stay in line with their increase to us.
So their CPI index adjustment was just shy of a dollar, about 99 cents.
99 cents, yeah.
And so you can see a lot of the items, we showed the current rate and then an effective rate that would not go into effect if the Board approved this until July 1st of 2022.
That's correct.
And many items, you know, did not change. The main thing that is the higher volume of things that we get in is the municipal solid waste, the household garbage, and this would take it from $44 a ton to $46 a ton. Also, our increase in operations, fuel costs, labor costs, insurance costs. If we don't take and keep our rates adjusted and keep up with that inflationary factor, this being an enterprise fund, supposed to be as a separate operation, and it's supposed to be self-supported. So when it becomes where it's not self-supported and it's losing money, then you have to take money out of the general fund, out of your property taxes, to go into the landfill. And so this is, we've been classified as a regional facility for some time.
Yeah, we service nine counties, including Hamilton County, Tennessee.
And so we have, you know, have a good bit of trash that comes into our facility because sometimes it's just closer for people than maybe another community's landfill.
Yeah, I got two calls today from Tennessee.
Do you have any idea what the percentages are, just ballparking what's actually from Walker County residents versus the nine participating counties around? Just to ballpark, I don't know, you may have something better than that.
Let's see. Probably about 5% out of county.
5% out of county, so 95% is on county residents on the back of us, okay.
At this time, yeah. And that fluctuates from year to year.
So another question, Payne, this BFI, that's who we take our waste to.
Republic Services.
Republic, yeah. They're going up 99 cents for the year. As this fuel turns straight up, can they go up again during the year, or is this locked in for a year?
It's locked in for a year.
For one year. Even if it was $10 a gallon, it's still?
Yeah, the effective date of the contract is July 1st.
Okay.
So any changes need to be made before that date. That's when this would take effect.
Okay, so you're saying they could go up, the 99 cents, they go up before July the 1st?
No.
It could.
So we're locked in on that?
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, they've issued their rate increase for the year, and we have probably until the end of April to basically finalize everything, and then it becomes effective on July 1st.
Okay.
What was the rate increase last year?
It was about 40 cents. Wasn't as much.
That was, that was Republic's weighted rate increase, 40.
Right. And then we, you know, we've reviewed, this is for the municipal solid waste, the things that go into the transfer station. Right now, our CND is going into the transfer station. They've been good to take our CND at the same rate as the transfer station, municipal solid waste, versus charging a heftier fee since it's construction demolition material. So they've worked with us since 2020 on that. And these other figures on the material rate sheet, like our tires, our mattresses, things like that, those were based on like our volumes and where we see, where the projections, where we see our projections going for the year, in order to at least maintain what we've made, so made in the past.
So you look like, you look kind of the progressive yearly how we're doing, and you make recommendations on all of these?
Sure, yes, sir. We look at all, we look at the trends of the data. I've got data here that goes back to 2017.
I know also too, every year, and I'm catching you off guard, you may not have the numbers in front of you, but you look at other surrounding operations, and I know, I think ever since I've been in office, Dade County's been over $50 a ton.
Yes. Dade County's at 50 a ton, Tuttuca's 46, Bradley County's 48, now Dalton Whitfield's 37, but they do such a high volume. A lot of this is sort of like car sales.
But they're not transferring there.
No, they're actually taking it in.
Right, they're there, that's considered, they don't have the transportation.
So everything we're taking in that's CND, municipal household waste, is loaded onto trucks and is transported to Alabama.
Right. And then on top of that, we have to pay a $1 state tax per ton.
To Alabama.
For every ton that goes into Alabama, yes, along with our state tax from Georgia for every ton that we accept at our CND landfill.
So with those disposal costs and taxes, then our gross cost is just with no labor, no anything, no overhead, just money we're sending out is how much per ton now?
Could you rephrase that for me?
You know, what Republic charges?
Yeah.
Taxes, both Tennessee and Georgia, what that total was per ton?
Right now, it's $28.60.
And it's going up 99?
Yes. It'll go, it'll go to, it'll go to, the base rate's 27.60. It'll go up 99 cents, so we'll be at 28.59. Then you add on ADEM's dollar tax, that'll be 29.59.
We're pushing.
Per ton.
We'll be pushing $30 per ton, and so that's before any, any of our overhead.
And before trucking?
That includes the trucking.
But it doesn't include the loading, the equipment, our staff, overhead, utility cost, and then also too, the ongoing operation of all the post-closure.
Right, we have, we have, we have a construction and demolition landfill there, a closed municipal solid waste landfill, and a brush and tree pile at the landfill, plus we have our recycling program and the transfer station. So the, this, you know, the difference between what we pay and what we charge goes to furnish all those, to support all those activities, along with paying employees, paying the utility bills, paying for fuel and all that sort of, our operations cost. It's not much to work with, but we're able to do what we can.
It's hard to keep our head above water.
It is, tons, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
One more question. Payne, just off the top of your head, how many tons a day would you say go out of the transfer station?
Today, we did 120, and it varies anywhere from 80 to about 120. We have gone as high as 100s, over 170 before. A lot of it has to do with the weather, season. The last two, the last two months were really tough. We averaged probably 80 tons a day, you know.
Sometimes too, that volume will flush away if another surrounding community is shut down, and that's happens.
A lot of times, somebody, there'll be something like, there was a fire at Catusa once, and that landfill, that, that operation closed down for the day, and everybody brought their waste to us.
Any other questions for Payne? Any additional comments, man?
Just, I just want to make sure I understand, so we're locked in at the rate increase. If we, if we pass this now, it doesn't go into, nothing goes into effect till July?
July 1st, correct.
Okay. Is there, do you feel like, just in your opinion, is there any way to look at this and move any of this around that will take a little, the burden off of the household? Or, because I see that as, I guess that's our big, that's what we have the most of, but that is probably what directly affects the majority of the county residents that use it.
Sure, we could move some.
I'm just curious if you, you know, I know we've got to make the adjustments to keep the balance, but I'm just, I'm just curious about all these different light items, if there were anywhere that you feel like we might can make adjustments that may keep the, you know, keep that burden down on the individual.
Payne, also one thing too, I know you and I've talked about this over the last couple of years, for recyclables, used to, they would pay us for recyclables.
Yeah, it was basically for cardboard, paper, and plastic, it's free service.
Then it went to free, and now we are paying.
Yeah, now we have to pay to recycle that.
Because I think I saw a purchase order the other day for about $455 for a container to be hauled for recyclables, and we're currently not charging people to bring recyclables. People can bring aluminum, cardboard, paper product, what else? Metals, I guess.
Well, metals are free. Waste oil is free, but cardboard, paper, and plastic, that's what we get charged to dispose.
Yeah, so if someone brings that in, separated it out, if they separate it out, if they bring in a bag of milk jugs, say, it's plastic, then we'll let them dispose of that at no cost, but we've been absorbing that cost to have that hauled to the recycle center.
I believe you do too, that it's important to have a green program of some kind.
Yes. So that's one thing that... So that's one thing that, you know, this kind of happened over several years as the recycling market's kind of upside down. That they could change one day where they may start not charging us for that, but that is something, so about how often does that container have to be moved?
At least once a week.
Once a week?
At least, yeah. Yeah, we get quite a bit of recycling. You know, a lot of times it depends on weather and that sort of thing, but I'd say it's a good average.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that the board tables this and let Payne look at trying to take the blunt of it off of the taxpayers.
I'll second that motion, I think that's a good idea, being that we have four months.
Well, part of this, we, I mean, we may have some time, but what we need to do, we don't want to wait till we get to the deadline.
No.
Because we need to give notice to our commercial haulers.
At least 60 days, well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we need to notify Republic at least 60 days before the effective date, which is July 1st.
Well, I think that's very feasible, but like Commissioner Blakemore said, we know we're gonna have to make an adjustment because it's, the price of poker's gone up, so we're gonna have to make an adjustment. But to look into it a little bit more and see if we can move some of that adjustment to, you know, to take it off of the, the household garbage site, I just don't think it would hurt us to take the time to look. So I'll second Commissioner Blakemore's motion to table it and let Mr. Payne Gilli look at it and, and give us some information, come back and, and if it's, and if it is what it is, then it is, but, but if you feel like that there's ways that you might could look at it that would help our taxpayers, that's what we'd like to do.
Okay.
So I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to second to table this resolution and any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will table this till our next meeting. Thank you, Payne.
Thanks, Payne.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a resolution R 1522, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property from the District Attorney's Office as unservable surplus and remove from the county inventory, whereas OCGA 3692 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order entered on its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make excess goods and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county, whereas the District Attorney for the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit has requested the property listed, property listed on Exhibit A be deemed unservable, unservable surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore be resolved the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the property listed in Exhibit A attached hereto to be made part hereof be hereby declared unservable surplus and removed from the county inventory, so resolved and adopted the 10th day of March 22. We do have a letter from the District Attorney, Chris Art. In this letter, he outlines that there is a vehicle, it is a 2005 Ford Crown Victorian with over 290,000 miles that needs repairs. Given the age and the mileage of the vehicle, the cost of repairs of the vehicle would be not cost effective. So any questions of the board on this request from the District Attorney to surplus this 2005 Crown Vic, so we can sell it? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, resolution R 1622, this, I'm not gonna bore you with this, this basically reads the same way. This is for some equipment at the road department. We recently purchased a new Grado, so this comes from our fleet manager Larry Klein. This is the list of the Grados that are requesting to surplus. We have County Unit 34, which is a 2004 Grado XL 4100. We have County Unit 51, which is a 1993 Grado 660E. We have County Unit 241, which is a 1994 Grado XL 4100. County Unit 672, which is a 1990 Grado 660E. These Grados have been out of commission for some time, they're not usable to us. We think that they will probably be very valuable to some organization for parts, since some of these parts it's on, some of these older units are not manufactured anymore. So we were going to take and put these on GovDeals.com. We've been in contact with them and they're even willing to come out and help us get these online because they think that these will be very valuable and will sell and will have a lot of bids. So they're willing to send a representative out to help us on this first time that we've used GovDeals.com since at least I've been in office at least. We've always done surplus local sales and by auction, so these being real specialty units and we want to be able to reach more of an international base, since these are very unique pieces of equipment. So we have any discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
It's been a big item for you.
Yeah, man, I want that second.
Uh, Commissioner Hart made the motion and Commissioner Askew made the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Department of Family Children's Services, the DFAX Local Community Advisory Board, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas OCGA 4932 provides the governing authority the responsibility to appoint members to the local County Department of Family Children's Services Board. Said governing authority shall ensure all appointments are made for a specific category, from specific categories from within the community, whereas one of the duties delegated to the Chairman of the Board is to appoint members to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board, whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of Department of Children's Services, DFAX Local Community Advisory Board. Kimberly Graves, or Grabbits? Grabbits, thank you, for the term beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2026 pursuant to OCGA 4932. Kimberly Grabbits is duly qualified to serve as a member of the local board and has agreed to serve the people of Walker County, therefore be resolved the Board of, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia to appoint Kimberly Grabbits to, is approved, so resolved the 10th of March. There's a list of qualified top members that they have to have by the state statute. Ms. Kimberly is a former member, staff member of DFAX, she's retired, and so this was a recommendation from their team and they were requesting that we appoint her to the Board. I don't personally know Ms. Kimberly, but she was, come highly recommended as a former employee and she does meet the criteria as one of the specific categories from the community that has to be, to meet the state requirements. So any further discussion about Ms. Kimberly's appointment?
You said she, she was, they were asked, the Board, the DFAX Board is the one that put her up for?
The, the director.
The director?
The director sent a letter, I'm sorry that letter's not included.
Just wanted to make sure.
But yeah, it was their request because she's very knowledgeable, the DFAX systems, former, I believe she was even a director at another location, she's retired, and they know she'll bring a lot of value to their Board of knowledge and be able to come in and be a strong member from the start. All right, so do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ms. Kimberly is approved, appreciate her willingness to serve.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a purchase order 2022-811 for $40,839 for a skid steer boom arm mowing attachment for the Walker County landfill funds to be paid in cash, no debt from the 2020 splosh. So this is a recommendation from our landfill director and there's a photograph and the specs of this piece of equipment. We have the skid steer, we bought a new one last year, I believe it was, and this is an attachment that he needs because they have to do a lot of mowing on the slopes and maintain the integrity of those slopes and it's not real easy to do with a, with a bat wing or a knuckle boom type tractor. And so a low-profile system like this will allow them to better maintain those slopes and keep those stable. So Mr. Payne's still with us, if anybody has any additional questions, he could probably help us. Any questions or concerns on this?
How soon delivery, Payne, do we have an idea?
Third to 69.
Oh, that's good.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm just very excited about this piece of equipment. This, this will allow us to mow on our slope, our slopes out there are 30 degrees, some of them even more, and this will allow us to reach those hard-to-reach areas. And Carlin with the road department has been very good about coming by the landfill a couple of times a year and mowing, but sometimes when they get there, I mean, it's just, it's just so overgrown, but this will allow us to maintain it as we go and to keep things cut back, that helps control vectors like, you know, rabbits and mice and snakes, whatever. This will help us with our land clearing activities and, I mean, we're 150-plus acres out there and there's, there's a lot to maintain and this machine will help, you know, one man do the work of two or three people. And we also have our sediment detention ponds, we have to mow the inside bank of that, that'll keep people out of that area and away from the water and that sort of thing and it's, this is just a, it'd be a great tool for us.
Okay, great comments, don't run off, we got you coming up next.
And you have demoed this year, or you have similar to this, right?
Yeah, we've, we've seen, Carlin and Larry and I drove down to Montgomery and looked at one and unfortunately their electrical system didn't quite work, but we got the gist of it and from the videos and from the feedback that I've gotten from people that own this piece of equipment, it's, it's really very versatile.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Mr. Payne?
No, sir.
Very good, good, good question. All right, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order for $40,839.19 for this piece of equipment to be funded out of our splosh?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Okay, the next purchase order that we have on our agenda, purchase order 22-844, this is for a 2022 Volvo L90H wheel loader to also be funded out of the 2020 splosh and this was one of the items that was budgeted into the splosh. There was an item that was needed, this wheel loader, and this is in the amount of $223,790 for this piece of equipment, which includes an extended warranty for 36 months or 7,500 hours is also included, so tell us about your current wheel loader.
Okay, it's a cab, it's pushing 10 years old, we have nearly 21,000 hours on it. It's, just about everybody that comes out there and works on it is really amazed at how we've taken care of it and how it's still going. It's, it's a little large though, this, this Volvo's got a lower center of gravity, it's gonna have a larger bucket, it's got some underbelly plates that'll help protect it from some of the debris that we roll over. It comes with solid tires, it's gonna have a cage on the window, there's plenty of room in the cab, so it's got some creature comforts for the operator and they spend, you know, eight hours a day in this thing, you know, pushing, pushing waste, so it's, it's very ergonomic. And it's, 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 you know, I'd like to thank the other, the other companies that got involved with this, Jim Ashberry with Power Equipment and Zach Walden with Yancey and Aaron Smith with Mead. They, you know, everybody just was, was very responsive and, and very eager to, you know, to help and, but, you know, at this time, given our current operations, the way we're operating, the, the Volvo seems to fit, you know, our operations right now.
And as Payne mentioned, they use this wheel loader every hour to load trailers with, and with 21,000 plus hours, we're on borrowed time.
We're gonna surplus that?
Well, we'll.
Or we keep it for spare?
Keep it as a spare.
That's what we talked about, is keeping it as a spare, especially to make sure that the new one's gonna work and be good for us and not have diesel exhaust issues with it and all the death and everything.
Do you have a spare now?
Yes.
So are we gonna sell the spare spare? There you go.
I mean, I mean, that's been discussed, but really if we start, if we get the, you know, when we get the expansion and we start moving into some construction activities there on site, you know, it would help to have an extra wheel loader for that. But, you know, now that we're doing the, the, the government website for, you know, used equipment, you know, there might be a good place to put some of that.
Right, if you have three sitting there and, and we don't use one, I mean, the most expensive, the most expensive piece of equipment you keep is one you don't use because you've still gotta buy batteries, you've still gotta buy tires and, and it just tends to cost you more per hour to operate, so just.
It can break just sitting there.
Yeah, oh yeah. So just, just keep that in mind, I mean, if, if we're not gonna use it, I'd like to see it sell, if we are gonna use it.
Sure.
How many hours on the spare spare?
Um, it's got about 19, yeah. And we use, we use it at our brush, at our brush pile.
Thank you.
So you are using it a few times a week?
And, and when, and when the current 938 goes down, for whatever reason, we bring it over from the brush pile and we use it in the, in the transfer station. So it still gets used.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions?
Oh, can I say one more thing? This went through Sourcewell.
I'm going ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Hey, this is, this is a savings, this is good, this is a savings of like 43.6% through Sourcewell. This thing lists at 272.
Yeah.
So, it's a, things really good.
Very good.
Good negotiation.
All right, Payne, any, any further questions or concerns on this?
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order for the wheel loader in the amount of $223,790 to be paid in cash upon delivery out of our splosh fund?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Blakemore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Payne, I think too on this was a fairly short delivery time too, wasn't it?
Uh, yes, like I see 120 to 150.
Which in today's time is not too bad, many other things we've been ordering takes a year. Okay, we do have another purchase order and I apologize, this did not make the agenda, this is somewhat of a late arrival, this come to us after the agenda had already been put out. I think we got this Friday. We are in the process of renovating the Annex 2 building that's not being utilized in about four years and the sheriff's office is responsible for courthouse security in all of the courthouses. So Captain Pat Stanfield is the captain that the sheriff has assigned for courthouse security and so we've been in communication and concert with him on what equipment he needs in that courthouse, from, from cameras to door locks to any other type of safety equipment that they need for their courthouse security plan that they have to have. This is a couple of items that Captain Stanfield has requested, he's done his homework and looked at the different vendors, but this is a x-ray machine that would be placed when you come in the main entrance of the door for $22,189 and then also the walk-through metal detector for. And then also the walk-through metal detector for three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for a, and then also there's installation and assembly testing, final commission, radiation safety inspection, verification of calibration, two-hour operator orientation for twelve hundred and fifty dollars, and then the freight shipping handling and all to get it here is nine hundred and fifty dollars. So this is a grand total of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars to Point Security in Linwood, North Carolina. This is a request again from Captain Pat Stanfield representing the sheriff's office for their security plan. So is there any questions on this purchase order?
So the total price is, that's the shipping in both pieces and everything?
That's my understanding, yeah. Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars should be grand total installed and delivered.
And these funds come from?
We will take this out of our general fund, capital, equipment funding.
Okay.
So it will come out of the general government fund.
Okay.
Any type of service contract, extended warranty, anything?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, and Mr. Stanfield wasn't able to be here with us tonight. Well, it does say right here on the walk-through, twenty-four months parts and depot repair warranty on that one. Twelve-month standard warranty on the x-ray machine.
It did.
There is some warranty on this. So I haven't personally been involved with the process or vendor, this is just a passover. But I think Mr. Stanfield's taken a lot of due diligence in selecting and looking at the different vendors and, you know, making his recommendation to this board. Okay, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order for twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars to Point Security?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Okay, the next item that we have here is, after we come out of our executive session two weeks ago in talking some personnel items, the board asks that do some research and start the public discussion about consolidating our animal control and our animal shelter departments. We did make one modification back a few weeks ago where we took one of our existing animal control officers and made him an interim animal control manager. One of the challenges that we have in Walker County with animal control is our volume is picking up. We're having more animals come into the shelter, we're having more animal control calls, and our increase in our community as far as our growth, and I'm sure that's only going to continue. One of the things too that I wanted to give y'all, just to look at, we're having more and more concerns because we're getting more and more calls for after-hours response. So we have three animal control officers that typically right now are working Monday through Friday. They are on call currently for nights, weekends, and holidays. And they pretty much now only respond to animal bites or if they called out by law enforcement. But this would take and expand and better define, so this is just a draft, you see at the bottom, draft for animal control after-hours response for review. I'd like to read this. It says after-hours response for animal-related emergencies that take place after hours on holidays, contact nine-one-one to have an on-call animal control officer dispatch. The on-call officer is only authorized to respond to the following emergencies. All other calls will be handled the following regular business day. And again, this is, would be implementing a policy at some point going forward, so this is just for review and conversation for the board at this time. Severely sick or injured domestic animals, the on-call officer may respond to sick or injured animals that cannot wait until eight AM the following day. If your pet is sick or injured, you must contact your veterinarian or emergency veterinarian. The on-call officer will not assist with owned animals that are sick or injured. Animal bites, the on-call officer may respond to bite cases in which the bites from a dog, cat, or wildlife has broken the skin of a human victim. On-call officers may respond to bites cases in which the bite from the wildlife rabies, vectors, raccoons, scunts, foxes, has broken the skin of the owned domestic dog or cat. If the biting animal is contained by the owner and no longer running at large, the on-call officer may take the bite report over the phone and enforce the quarantine the following business day. Vicious animals, the on-call officer may respond to complaints of vicious animals creating a public safety threat, which has been verified by on-duty law enforcement personnel. We are getting more and more calls about livestock as well. The on-call officer may respond to complaints of loose livestock on the roadway, which have been verified by an on-duty law enforcement personnel. Severe animal cruelty situations, this would be something new and additional as well. The on-call officer may respond to backup requests by law enforcement for severe animal cruelty situations, which cannot wait until eight AM the following day. Right now, some of these things are, that we're doing basically is the sick or injured or bite cases, but it is only on-call by the nine-one-one, and it's nights, weekends, and holidays. This policy is, you noticed that in there, next day. So what I'm proposing and feel like that we need for our county to go forward is where we would have a minimum of two animal control officers on duty, eight hours a day, every day, seven days a week. And so that's going to require some additional staffing. So this would create a new position where I've referred to this now as just a animal services director, and then that director would be a new position. Also, we would be creating a new position of animal control manager, which right now, as I mentioned, we do have standing in place as the interim manager, but this would be considered a new position. Then under the new position of animal control manager, you would have four animal control officers that would be full-time. Currently, we just have a total of three, and one of them works a second job, so he's only on duty during the week till about one-thirty, and so that would create an additional position. The animal shelter manager, the only change there as far as staffing levels would be to add an additional new position. In talking through and looking at that, if we have animal control officers on duty seven days a week, they're gonna be bringing in more animals on the weekend, which a lot of that now gets pushed to Monday. And so we need at least one manager and three kennel technicians on duty, eight hours a day, seven days a week. I do have on the second page there, this is a snapshot of the current animal control FY twenty-twenty budget, setting beside the animal shelter budget for twenty-twenty, and then combining those two existing budgets. So it's just carrying the math over and adding those together. The fourth column there to the right would be a new projected budget to meet these staff personnel requirements, to be able to operate our animal control services seven days a week. So this would take our subtotal of our personnel expense, which this includes wages, health insurance, short and long-term disability, life insurance, social security, Medicare expense, retirement, workers' comp, and so forth. Subtotal currently now in the budget is five hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. This would increase to seven hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. The operational expenses would change a little bit. What I'm projecting currently, the combined operational expenses is a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, projecting that that would need to increase to a hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And most of that's being driven by increase in fuel costs and additional cost for spay and neutering, which will be another thing I'll bring up, additional information here in just a moment. So the operational cost would just, you know, increase about six thousand dollars. So the grand total recommendation of, we'd go from six hundred and forty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to nine hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars would be the projected budget to increase the four staff positions, creating this under one division, under one unit. And as you can see, most of that cost is in the staff addition. So about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year increase, is that?
That, I think that's a little, I think we're being presumptive here. First of all, I personally don't know that we would need a, these, some of these extra positions. I don't know why we would need a manager, an animal control director, handle animal control, and the shelter manager to report to them. So we're gonna look through this and see, but I think that's, those numbers, to put any numbers out there right now is just an assumption because...
Yeah, this is just a recommendation. It's not to be voted on.
Well, I was gonna say, I think the numbers that we're talking about, we're assuming those numbers. Until we work this organizational chart out and decide what types of jobs we're putting, I don't think we, the numbers are, I don't think that comes into play yet.
That's what I was requesting, and so that's why I brought...
Organizational chart.
Organizational chart and job descriptions, and I've got four here as well. Another problem that we're having and looking at the waiting list that we have with our shelter, and I was talking with Stanley Sals today, and he brought up the question, and I'd already been working on this, what are we gonna do about stray cats? When you look at people that are calling, as he said, I think very well, he said, you'll get, you know, maybe four or five dog calls, which will usually represent one dog. He says then you will get five or six of those, and then you'll get one call about a cat situation. And then usually when you get there, it's feral cats, and it's ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty cats type situation. So doing some research and looking at best practices in other communities, one of the programs that I'd like to see us take on, it's called Good for Everybody, Why Choose a Community Cat Program? This is the benefits of spay and neuter. It prevents unwanted litters, saves taxpayer dollars by keeping cats out of the animal shelter, decreases the number of cats being killed, help improve the health of outdoor cats, reduce nuisance behaviors, spraying, fighting, howling, and roaming. The community cat program is a program where you would humanly trap community cats, followed by spay and neuter vaccinations, and the return of the cats to their community that they were picked up from. Over time, their numbers will be greatly reduced. The ear tipping of a spayed or neutered cat, which is a painless procedure on the ear tip, is a universal symbol of a spayed or neutered outdoor cat. And so it's getting very challenging to find rescue organizations because everybody is bombarded. This is a national program that everyone is dealing with the problem, I'm trying to say, of so many cat populations and nowhere to go with them. So many communities I'm finding have adopted such a program, that's why there was an increase on the budget under the spay and neuter. So when we have these cases where there's a community of cats that no one's really claiming owner, ownership too, even though there may be several people that may be feeding them out of just human kindness, but to be able to have an aggressive approach to go out and do that. Some draft job descriptions to present to y'all. This first one would be the animal services director. Can you get one please? I'm sorry. Can you get one? Okay, sorry. So one of the issues that we have in speaking with our animal control officers is a lot of times that they go out and people don't understand what our ordinances are, they don't realize they're doing anything wrong. Some of these practices with their welfare and care of their animals, they've done, it's been more generational learning. And so one of the essential duties that is in the animal services director's position would be to establish an educational program regarding Walker County animal care ordinances, humane treatment, and related animal welfare best practices, along with animal behavior problems, animal adoptions, community engagement through public speaking to the community groups and providing information and education to the public. One of the key parts here is engagement with our local school systems to provide educational outreach training in animal care and welfare best practices to our school communities. You know, the agriculture industry's done a phenomenal job through the four-H program and other programs, working into the schools with education, a lot around agriculture. We're seeing other communities that are taking an educational approach to the kids to change the habits and also to educate the kids on the best way to care for animals and maintain animals. And so one of the, I think, very important roles of an animal services director is that education piece and to provide public engagement and also be willing to, you know, speak on TV, radio, and different things. So there's a lot more in there for that, but that's just a couple of the main highlights. Is that educational. Here's a revised animal shelter manager job description, which piggybanks into the animal services director. And then also a revised animal control as well. We do have already job descriptions for our kennel technicians, but you can see, you're getting quite a pile of information here, and so the kennel technicians be happy to send those to you, but there hasn't been any revisions or changes made to those on the kennel technicians. But these here all have modifications to them and also the creation of the new one of the animal shelter, excuse me, animal services director on that. So wanted to provide that to y'all with your requests, since there's a lot of reading there, and then we can have more discussion about this and put it on the agenda in there in the future.
If you would too, send out to us the existing job description.
Okay. Yeah, I'll send y'all all of those.
The ones that we have, so we can compare changes.
Yeah, 'cause we've got those for the shelter manager and animal control and the technicians, so I'll send those to you as well. Yeah, good question. Okay.
Another question? If this was put in place, where would we, where would the office be for the animal services director?
It really all needs to be at the animal shelter. It all needs to be based out of a single location, in my opinion.
Is there room there?
I think so. I mean, it would take a little rearranging and coordination, but I think it could be done.
Okay.
Shannon, one more quick question. So the difference in a kennel tech level two versus a kennel tech level three, is that something that's obtained through continuing education or...
Continued education and also being certified by our veterinarian for euthanasia.
Okay.
And maintaining the protocols for the drugs-related materials for that process.
So a level two cannot do euthanasia?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And then a level one is basically just someone coming in new as kind of an entry-level position.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll send y'all those job descriptions that you'll see defines that out.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Very good.
All right, at this time, our monthly department statistical data... All right. At this time, our monthly department statistical data in alphabetical order, animal shelter, again, our intake of ninety-one dogs and forty-eight cats. We did have success in our outtake through adoptions, rescues, and returns to owner of a hundred and two dogs and fifty cats. We did have to unfortunately euthanize two dogs and two cats due to health issues. Our code enforcement inspected eight hundred and seventy-five properties in compliance. There was thirty-seven citations written, ten cases closed out, so they were able to get ten properties in the month of February in good standing and signed off on. So that's great progress in a cold, wet, wintry month to get ten properties in compliance. Roadside trash programs back in full swing. They picked up eighty-eight hundred pounds of trash. Our elections office tells us they had a hundred and seventy new registered voters. Our fire department responded to four hundred and seventy-one calls for services, handled by seven hundred and sixty-two responding units, and had a big month on installing smoke alarms. So we want to continue to install those smoke alarms. Anyone that doesn't have smoke alarms in their home, there was twenty-seven of those installed. Twenty-one nights booked at Mount Coe Farms. Single-family home construction is still good. Twelve new homes, permits pulled in February and fourteen in January. We added nine hundred and thirty new followers on our Facebook page. So we've got a lot of people out there following us and watching us on Facebook page. And we had forty-four new people added to our newsletter subscription by email. We had eighteen hundred and eighty-six transit rides, which was up from January, even though it's a short month, from fifteen hundred and sixty-six. So I would say we will continue to see our transit numbers go up, especially with the cost of gas and fuel and getting into the springtime of the year. And then also, we've gradually expanded our hours of operations as we've been able to add staff. They used to have a cutoff about three-thirty, four o'clock, and I think now they're doing last pickups around five, five-thirty. So that has also helped people that needs our transit service. So this time on our agenda is our commissioner comments, and we'll start with Mr. Blake.
Just as always, appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved. And if I can help you in any way, call, text, or email, thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Yes, thank y'all for your input. It helps us, like I said, helps us do our job better. I would like to mention our Walker County Farmers Market is getting ready. You know, it's spring planting time and has a great meeting with the two ladies that run that for us. And they're kind of working to try to do some fundraising on their own and some sponsorship stuff. So they, I want to give just the walkercountyfarmersmarket@gmail.com, and you can get information as far as sponsoring or helping out and helping. We want to keep them here in the county. We're, it looks like with the food shortages that we could have and supply chain shortages, we already know we have. We definitely want to keep our local grown produce here locally, so we need to give them the market and we need to support them. So I'd like to see everybody get fired up and try to help our local farmers and gardeners.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, good point, Mark. And that's held up at the...
Ag Center.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's where I thought.
So first thing, fire department graduated nine new firemen this week before last. So congratulations to those guys. Not more people out saving lives and putting out fires. And the one thing I'm more happy about tonight than I am the great odds being sold is the work that's being done on Annex Two over there across from Shannon's office there. So that work started, Stacy Higdon and Ricky Austin and crew been over there working. I stopped by there last week, I'm gonna try to go by there tomorrow and look at it. So I'm excited to see that building fixed up and put into good use.
Yes, sir. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Certainly appreciate it. If I can be of service, you can call, text, email me. I see some employees out in the audience tonight. I want to thank the road department. I've talked to you guys a bunch this week. So strong work this week, certainly appreciate that. Payne, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for working hard negotiating all of this. Just appreciate everyone coming. John Morehouse being on our planning and zoning board, certainly appreciate that. Thank y'all very much.
All right, very good. Yeah, do stay involved. And, you know, I know we have a lot of people watching us on Facebook. Our numbers keep going up there, so very grateful for everybody watching on Facebook that's not able to attend, but always grateful to see everyone in live attendance. We do have some items of discussion, of business of the Board of Commissioners. We do have a need to go into executive session to discuss the items related to real estate, personnel, and cybersecurity. So I make the motion that we go into executive session for those items. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. My Commissioner Blake Moore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will stand adjourned until our executive session's over, then we'll be back out. Okay, we are back here in our meeting. It's still Thursday, March the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is ten oh eight PM. We just come out of our executive session. There's no further business of the board at this time, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. My Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.